Morning Wichita and good morning to all of you here present at City Council for our workshop. I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I motion to approve the minutes for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items one through fifteen.
Are there items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item six.
Any other items? I'd also like to pull number seven. Any other items? I see none. I motion to approve the consent agenda items without number six and number seven.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. We'll begin with number six. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Yes, I just wanted to give Gary this awesome opportunity to talk about this item. I've had a lot of questions just from my district with the possible impact that could have to some of the parks. But I just wanted to make sure that they were getting the same information that we were as far as the six parks that it could potentially interfere with, we'll say. But I just, if you could give us an update, that would be great.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. So this is a under park, is a park item. Spoke with Reggie a little bit before the meeting this morning. Our City Engineers Office has been directly involved with this project for some time. So KDOT for at least several years now has been working on design for improvements to Q ninety-six from one thirty-five over to Twenty First Street is where the six lane expansion would be. So as you kind of go through that corridor and if you've got, and I apologize, I don't have something electronic to show you, but this is an attachment to your packet today to the agenda item that does a really good job of explaining the impact, potential impact to, so starting at the west end and going east, there's some, some small impact at the Q ninety-six Fishing Lake Park, which is right at one thirty-five and Q ninety-six. As you move east towards Woodlawn, you've got Chisholm Creek Park on both sides of Q ninety-six. There's some minor impact on the north end, south sides to one parking lot, to the Q ninety-six path. The Red Bud Path is mentioned. A determination has been made that the Red Bud will not be impacted. There's some sections of the Q ninety-six path that will be rebuilt with the project. So what this finding of de minimis impact means is just that. Every effort has been made through design, through the efforts of our staff, engineering and park both, working with KDOT and their consultant to truly minimize the impact on these facilities. Included in this with the Chisholm Creek Park is that park was either purchased or developed with federal funds. KDOT is required to work with us to determine the value of the impact and provide that as compensation for either improvements of another park or acquisition of additional park land, which is a good thing. So we believe every effort's been made to do a great job to not adversely impact the intended use of these parks. That's what this item is today. This is the very last item in KDOT's process for what they call a finding of no significant impact. And what that does then is it allows them to move forward with right of acquisition on the project. Having said all of that, I know there's a lot of information real quick. We did receive information from KDOT in the last two weeks that they are looking at the schedule now for the project. So we're not sure exactly what that means. We were supposed to have more information the week of October seventh. And, and they're going to provide some details then on what their plans are to move forward with right of acquisition. We assume that that's still going to happen, but it may be that construction is delayed a little further out than we had originally thought. Based on that, we think it might be worth considering delaying consideration of this item until October fifteenth.
Is this something that they could potentially use eminent domain to get this through if, if like something happened with us and we didn't vote for it?
I suppose it's possible. I don't know that I want to speak for KDOT, but I think that's highly unlikely. In our past experiences, working with KDOT on state and federally funded projects when parks were impacted, I have not seen that happen. I'm confident KDOT does not want to go that direction. I do believe, and again, if you're, if you want on October fifteenth, if you so choose to delay this, we could show you more detail on what is being impacted, the efforts that were made. We feel really comfortable that the impact has been minimized and, and there's not an adverse impact anywhere. Most everything is staying in place. Q ninety-six Fishing Lake is just a little bit on the banks. Most people won't even know anything's happened there. The parking area at Chisholm Creek on the north will be rebuilt. That'll all be replaced the same. Q ninety-six path that's being impacted will be rebuilt. All of that stays the same. So I would not expect that we would get to that point.
Yeah, I was just curious about the process. That's all.
Ed, thank you, and thank you, Gary, for your comments. And I agree about delaying just because we're still waiting to hear more information from KDOT. And I've been intricately involved in these discussions. I also just want to point out that I attended the park board meeting when the park, the park board commissioners approved this, and I'm almost positive it was unanimous. They understood too that the amount of land that would be taken wasn't really going to be programmable anyway, that it was really minimized. There was very little discussion and the item did pass and I'm almost positive it was unanimous. So I know the park, park board of commissioners was supportive of this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I meant to mention that. So thank you, Councilmember Tuttle. And I agree with what their vote was.
I would appreciate if we choose to delay it, when it comes back, if you could show some type of visual of the impact that it, just so people can understand the minimal impact that it will have.
I think that would be good. We'd be happy to do that.
Becky, do you want to make a motion or if we're ready?
Sure.
I'm happy to. Thank you. Did we say we're going to delay it till October fifteenth? Was that your recommendation?
Yeah, that would be, we're supposed to have more information from KDOT the week of October seventh, so I think that makes sense.
Okay. And if we find out that we don't have what we need from KDOT to move forward, we can delay it again. This isn't, because they're delaying it, our timeline of delaying it isn't going to be impactful in any negative way, correct?
I agree.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then I would move that the, that we delay this agenda, consent agenda item until October fifteenth.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Consent agenda item number seven. May I please ask the law department to just explain some of our self-insurance procedures and the fund itself? How much is budgeted and how much has been expended so far? And what is available?
Good morning, Mayor. We're members of council, Jennifer McGonigal, City Attorney. This item would be paid from the self-insurance fund. This year, the city has budgeted two point five million dollars for that fund. Year-to-date expenditures are a little over three hundred thousand, not including this item and any of, any other settlements to come before the end of the year. That, that budgeted amount has varied over the years, but this year, the budgeted self-insurance reserve is two point five million.
And can you give us a perspective of what it's looked like in the past several years?
Yeah, that's been, we've had payments going back to, you know, at one point, we've budgeted in the amount of one point five million. I think we've had over that, just depends on the year, kind of depends on the budget, but it's, it's ranged in about that one million to two point five million range.
I'm sorry, I'm just wanting to put this on the record. I did ask this question via email and I wanted those numbers to be on the record. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was three point nine five three million.
And that was actually the amount settled. Those were settlements.
And then in two thousand and twenty-two, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-four amount settled.
That's correct.
And two thousand and twenty-one, one point seven eight million.
That is, that is correct.
And so, again, the three hundred four thousand figure for two thousand and twenty-four does not take into account this consent agenda item or previously settled?
Or the upcoming expenditures to settle on, on a case that you'll, that will come before you soon, the progeny lawsuit. So that number will be higher before the end of the year and we can get that final number for you the end of the year if you'd like.
We would, or I would. Thank you. Any further discussion regarding this settlement of claim?
Just one quick one, Jennifer. The excess money that would be in the, the fund after this year, does that carry over into the same fund next year?
That's a question I think I'd have to defer to finance for. I don't know if anybody knows. But I think they, they re, I, I just think they recalculate each year and I think it goes back to general. I know, I can tell you, the budget, the number has been budgeted over the years. In two thousand and twenty-one, it was seven hundred thousand a year. I think that's what you're asking for, Mayor. It was a million dollars a year budgeted in twenty-two. It was budgeted for a little over three million in twenty-three. I don't know if it goes back into, if, if finances here can tell me, I'm happy to, or I can find that out after the meeting and let you know.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like this consent agenda item is to authorize the payment.
It is to authorize payment of mediated settlement.
All right. I have, I will motion to approve consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Slaber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, September twenty-third, for the following items. For engineering, we have the Outsource Paving Preservation Program, CIP, Concrete Street Repairs Phase One for Roston Construction LLC in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand. This was awarded within the engineer's estimate from the original bid. For purchasing, we have the online auction of released property and evidence for Wichita Police Department. This is requesting your authority to extend the contract for one year, ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, with the expected annual reimbursement of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. We have the Sewage Treatment Screener for Parks and Corporation in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And we have the wired and wireless, excuse me, data network architecture and software-defined wide-area network software maintenance and support renewal for Logicalis Incorporated for an aggregate three-year total of two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and forty cents. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are our open public opportunities out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer your questions and recommend your approval.
Josh, why was the, back to the first slide. There's, there's a lower bid that was not accepted. Can you explain thinking there?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Johnson. That's a great question. The original bid that they submitted was three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seventy-nine dollars. So that was the actual bid submission that the vendor requested for the work of scope. Once we identified the low bidder, the engineering department then worked with that vendor to request that the amount be increased to allow for additional services as they're found for the department flexibility and operations. So we identified the low bid first, and then once we identified the low bid, they're requesting an increased authorization to spend.
Why would, why weren't those additional services included in the bid in the first place?
Paul, do we have anybody in engineering?
Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities. This is one of our outsourced pavement preservation projects. And we go out and we estimate measured quantities for the work and that's what we bid. We increase it a little bit to cover any additional work that we might find as we're doing construction.
Okay. Thank you.
So does that mean it still could come in under that three hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Yes, it could come in under that. We will-
So it's a flex spending essentially?
Right. We will pay out measured quantities for the work that's completed. So it could go up to that amount.
Can we take a look at slide number four?
Sure.
Property and evidence. I just wanted to highlight that Councilmember Glasscock and I had the opportunity to visit the property and evidence unit last week and just very appreciative of the work that they do. There's a lot. In order to carry out any case, we have to hold, or the city has to hold property as well as the evidence for the case to move forward. And the, the folks across the street do a really great job. So I just wanted to highlight that really quick.
Yeah, that, I think, thank you so much for your comments and thank you for the great question. I think this item specifically was really interesting because there's not many surplus auctions services that can do this. So there is a, a large amount of regulatory burden that this contracted vendor does. So that's why we're coming to your request today to request this for one year, because that allows to evaluate, possibly to piggyback a larger national cooperative, or if we want to bid this out locally.
And then slide number nine. So these are the open bids that are available right now. So anyone in the community can apply and the process again is online. I just wanted to highlight that there was a winter emergency shelter on there on slide nine.
Somewhere buried, yeah.
So the closing date for that is October fourth. And the other one that I wanted to just highlight as another open public opportunity is the downtown restrooms and hydration station. But I do have a question regarding that. I just wanted to know how much and how many downtown bathrooms again?
There are two downtown restrooms that will be included with the bid. One is at Nascar Park and the other is at yeah, A Price Witter Park. And then there is one hydration station at A Price Witter as well.
And what's the total amount for that again?
I don't have that off the top. Five hundred thousand.
So five hundred thousand for two restrooms and one hydration station, is that correct? And this is an open bid until October eighteenth? So nothing has been purchased yet?
Yes, ma'am. So this will be opened on October eighteenth. We'll have at ten a.m. the bids opened for the public in this room. And then at that point, we will have a week of due diligence and review to make sure the low bid is responsive and responsible. And we will be bringing that back to council on our formal bids and contracts report.
May I have more information regarding that? I know that previously I thought that this had already been purchased. But I guess the item has not, the bathrooms have not been purchased yet?
I understand it's not.
That is correct. They have not been purchased yet.
I would like to direct staff to give us a report on how many downtown bathrooms we have open as well as closed and then how this will add to the system of bathrooms available downtown.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion on boards and bids? I motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts for September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities. I have a few petitions for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petitions represent one hundred percent of the improvement district and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Cottonwood Creeks Estates, located in District Four, the project will provide water, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements required for a new residential development. Buffalo Pines Edition, located in District Two, the project will provide water improvements required for new residential development. And revised petitions for Cypress Glen Second Edition, located in District Five. On May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the City Council approved water, sewer, and paving improvements required for a new residential development. The developer has submitted revised petitions with revised improvement district. The budgets remain as previously approved and cover the cost of a private bid. It is recommended that the City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. I will stand for questions.
I motion to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
I would like to appoint Camilla Burrell to the district advisory board for District Two, and I've shared the information with the clerk. Thank you.
Any further appointments? I see none. I motion to approve the appointment made by Councilmember Tuttle.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Councilmember comments. I'll just say thank you to all those who attended the Latin Fest event on Saturday in Vice Mayor Ballard's district, as well as everyone who went and supported Exploration Places Drone Festival. I know the weather put a little damper on the festivities Friday and Saturday, but the show went on on Sunday and Monday and just very appreciative of the community building events in our community, as well as the big investment by the Wichita Foundation in donating a million dollars for the amphitheater to be built. And now it's a community asset. So again, really appreciative of our community and if there are any events coming up this weekend, I will be emailing the council members so that we can share them during our mayor's briefing on Thursday. All right. I motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Assistant City Manager Troy, will you please take over the workshop?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, thank you. We have three items for you today, part of the City Council workshop. The first one is a review of our fireworks from two thousand and twenty-four. And so we have fire chief. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. I'm here today to provide for you an overview of what we, our fireworks season looked like in two thousand and twenty-four. But before I do that, I want to give you a little bit of a history. Starting in two thousand and eighteen, we started the implementation of fireworks enforcement. And every year, we tried to refine that, tried to provide compromises. Fireworks is one of those items in which you have fifty percent of the people that oppose fireworks and you have fifty percent of the people that are supportive of fireworks. And so each year we go through and we take a look at what we did that year, what worked really well for us and what didn't work so well. And we go back to the drawing board. So this year's presentation is, just to give you a little bit of background. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had been doing fireworks enforcement, like I said, since two thousand and eighteen. So in two thousand and twenty-two, November of two thousand and twenty-two, to be quite honest with you, we put together three committees. We gathered in what I refer to as a community committee. And that community committee consisted of one representative. And we asked that that representative be somebody that was very vocal in their opposition of fireworks from each one of the districts. And so we, we put them all in a room and we began to gather their comments of what they didn't like about fireworks. And then our ultimate goal too was to utilize them as liaisons throughout the entire process. Someone that, they were usually people that are pretty well engaged within their neighborhood associations. And so our goal was to use them to gather information from the neighborhood associations, help us also spread the word of what we were going to do with fireworks, the following, coming forth. And then also ultimately try to alleviate some of the complaints that you receive. Try to be a mediator, basically. So we began meeting with them in two thousand and twenty-two. That was our one, one of our committees. Our second committee was to gather the vendors, anybody that was interested in selling fireworks within the city of Wichita. That was our second committee. And then our third committee was a committee of internal staff. So we engaged city council members, couple city council members, we engaged Wichita Police Department, law, parks, ourselves, anybody that it would actually touch. And so what we, our, our ultimate goal was to- And so what we, our ultimate goal was to fold. Try to come up with a compromise, well, I guess it was single fold. Try to come up with a compromise that was amicable to everybody. Might be not the best solution or their desired solution, but something that was workable. So the very first thing that we came up with is that we needed to change the current ordinance. And so we did so. And that's what this slide depicts. So we decided because it was late in 2022 when we started meeting and then it was like all the way till February of 2023 when we actually come up with some amicable resolutions or that we thought that we could work with. And it's also, just for your information, vendors, fireworks vendors that actually sell the fireworks, they have about a year time between the time they order it and the time they receive their products. And they do that because most of their products comes in from outside the United States. So it takes a long time. And so they have to do a lot of pre-planning. Well, we didn't feel like it was fair to them to implement our entire change in one year because they had already purchased the product that they wanted to sell or that they believed that they could sell in 2023. So we, we identified a two-phase. So the first thing that we did was we amended our current, the city of Wichita's current fireworks ordinance. And we made it more in alignment with the Kansas Administrative Regulation 22-6, which is the state's regulation. We then decided that we would legalize. So like I said, since 2018, we were trying to curtail aerial fireworks discharge and not having a whole bunch of success because the city of Wichita sits like on an island with the surrounding communities in which the surrounding communities were selling, they were adhering to the state regulation, which allowed them to sell aerial fireworks. And so people would literally walk across the street, buy their fireworks, and come back into the city. Those of you that had been around for a while, we used to always say, shoot them where you buy them. Well, when you walk across the street, they don't discharge them. They're at the fireworks stand. They walk back the street and they feel like they're in the city of Wichita and in the city, adhering to the city ordinance. So we, a compromise, like I said, with these three committees was that we would legalize aerial fireworks. The safe and sane, those are the fireworks, what we refer to as ground fireworks. Those are the fireworks that don't go any further than six feet in any direction. Those are ones in which the city of Wichita has allowed since its inception of fireworks shooting. And then the legal shooting hours remain the same. We're in alignment with every county, city, state, within the state of Kansas, the 10 to midnight. So this was phase one. The one thing that the, the committee that was in opposition that we put together of fireworks was very staunch about was, you know, at the time, our fireworks citations. If you violated a fireworks ordinance, you would receive a hundred dollar fine. And they believed that if they're compromising to allow aerial fireworks, if we could increase the fine, that that would be a deterrent to those that elected to shoot aerial fireworks. And they, they believed that we would get more cooperation. And so we increased the fines to the numbers that you see. There are 1,000, 1,500, and 2,000. So 2024, it brings us to 2024. So phase two is 2024. And what we allowed in 2024 was the actual selling of aerial fireworks, which was significant. We also curtailed the dates. Again, the legal sale dates were June 27th through July 4th. Safe and sane mirrored exactly what the state does, the 27th through the 5th. And the actual shooting dates, we limited to July 3rd through July 5th. And the reason we did that was because July 4th this year was on a Thursday. And we assumed, the committees assumed that most people are going to take July 5th off and they're going to continue their fireworks shooting. And that also led into the, to the weekend. So as in the past, we joint patrol efforts with PD. We conducted patrol on June 27th through the 26th, or through July 6th. So we had patrol units out that entire time, not full force, but limited. And we tried to be very strategic about their placement. And then we had full force on July 3rd through the 5th. And we, we patrolled what we refer to as the hotspots. If you ask me about hotspots, we have a slide coming up and I'll explain that here to you in a few minutes. So what did our 2024 fireworks season yield? It yielded one structure fire with an estimated loss of $10,000. The cause of that was improper disposal of their fireworks. We had 36 injuries reported to the area medical facilities. We had 1,160 calls that were submitted to the fireworks complaint hotline. And I will tell you that for the past couple of years, we've been able to pull out of those 1,160 calls, which ones were actually made by citizens of the city of Wichita that live within the corporate city limits. There were 719. 719 of those calls came from complaints from the city of Wichita citizens. So our fire, fire incidents, this is since 2018. We've got, I've got a table there that you can kind of take a look at. Usually one of the questions that I get is what's a nonstructure? Nonstructure could be a chicken coop. It could be a deck. It could be a gazebo. That's what's referred to as a nonstructure. Injuries, here's a list of the injuries that we've had since 2018. If you go through and you average those, we average about 40 of them. 2022, if you look, that number is really not accurate because we were missing two of our, our partners in the medical field that didn't report that year. So here's the hotspots. The lighter the color, the more complaints in those areas. And this is taken from the 911 complaint line. And it's a map that's put together by, by the, by our GIS, by identifying those areas. And so those areas with the lighter colors, colors, there's where we concentrate our efforts at. So financially, we inspected 50 fireworks tents, which was a, almost double what we normally do because we allowed the sales of fireworks this year. Our temp permit fees encumbered $75,000. Our collection funded expanded enforcement efforts. One of the things I want to say here is, once we paid the enforcement teams, that money is collected and it's held in a pot all by itself ever since we started in 2018. So the $75,000 sits in a pot right here all by itself. And the idea was to secure enough funding to pay for the enforcement teams. We did that. This year, we paid right at $67,000 to our enforcement teams. So we have $8,000 left. That's important to me because it's the first time we've ever had a surplus of funding. We are going to utilize that funding. It's been set aside for 2025 to help us enhance our marketing and educational piece, where before we've never had anything. I talked to the comms team and they said, don't get too excited. They don't pay for a whole bunch, but I'm excited because it's better than zero. So we have $8,000 that we get to start the season with and actually try to do some better marketing and education. And then the fines from citation estimate to be somewhere over $50,000 this year. And these are just some statistics. Our dollar loss and, our dollar loss is 83% less than what we had in 2023. Our injury, year over year, if you do since 2018, we've had a reduction in 8%. The average daily calls to the fireworks complaint line has dropped by about 5%. Our citations increased by 580%. I wish George Theo Harris was here because we went from rating, riding five to 34. So that should make George happy, which I get an opportunity to meet with him tomorrow, so. Vendor applications increased by 333%. We go from, we, in the past, we had three vendors that were interested in selling since we opened it up to aerials. This year, we went to 13 vendors. And this year, we also set up in 2024 a tip line, a hot tip line, where we gave a telephone number and we also provided an email address. And we were able, we got two tips of people selling illegal fireworks. And so we were able to mitigate those and get them shut down. So challenges, you know, we still want to always be cognitive of the health and well-being of the community. And what I mean by that is, you know, people have pits and fireworks affect their pits. People have PTSD that affects people. So we always try to be very conscientious of those things. We'll continue to engage our citizens that are opposed to fireworks. I think it's very important to hear their voices and see what we can do to tweak or refine or come to some type of compromise that's livable for both sides. We're very conscientious of the equitable strategies to address fireworks sales. We do realize that most of fireworks tents are ran by nonprofit organizations. We don't want someone to get a monopoly on the market, so we'll be very cognitive in regards to that. We want all of our vendors to adhere to compliance of the ordinance. So we'll be very strict in our inspections. And again, consistent messaging. Our ultimate goal is that 100% of the citizens of Wichita truly understand and fully understand our fireworks ordinance, the sales dates, the fines associated, what they can and can't sell. So our action items, like I said, I'm excited. About $8,000 is going to allow us to increase our messaging, hopefully get out there and do more education in regards to our legal shooting hours, the dates and the fines. We'll continue to review after we meet with all of our three committees. We'll continue to review our fireworks ordinance and then assembling of those three committees. And in fact, our first meeting is with our community members and some of our council members tomorrow at 1 o'clock down at the Regional Training Center. So what we did was compile a list. The district members that have already been liaison, have been gracious enough to serve again. And so we've got those district members representatives. And then we also kept a list of some of, well, not some, but all of our complaints that reached our office. And we've invited them to the meeting tomorrow too. So trying to be truly engaging and hear everyone's voice. So with that, I'll stand for questions. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief, for all your work. This is definitely one of those that's kind of a thankless job right here. Can we go back to slide nine real quick?
Sure. These have 33, 34. Which side, what's slide nine?
Fire incidents.
Pardon? Minor incidents?
Fire incidents.
Oh, fire incidents, okay. Yes.
Okay, yep, this one. 2024, it just looks a little incomplete there. Do we just not have all the data yet for the?
We're, we're still compiling some of it, to be honest with you. As far as citizens' complaints, we, we are confident in our structure fires because that information has to be, we have to adhere to state law and get that type of information submitted right away. But some of the citizens' complaints, the grass, the dumpster fires, those types of things, yes, we're still gathering information. We've had a little bit of a hiccup with our computer aid dispatch system. So we're still working on gathering that data, sir.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the one incident we had, that was improper disposal of fireworks, right?
Yes.
They put it in the, the trash can before it was all the way out, so.
Yes.
Yep, and that's what most of them usually are every year.
Correct. They put it, and, or they make the mistake of actually putting it, whatever their dumpster is. They either use an improper dumpster, like a plastic container, or they put it in their trash dumpster, which is a plastic container, and they stick it right next to their home. Yeah. And they go to bed for the night.
All right, well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the presentation, Chief. I just want to highlight and synthesize, I think, the entire PowerPoint. Citations up, call volume down, injuries down, fires down, loss down. And so in every measurable way, I think this was a success compared to last year. And so I just want to express that. Thank you for, seems like a robust community engagement and people involved. And in every measurable factor, I think this was a success. So hopefully we can replicate that next year.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. Thank you for the presentation. Are you, just off top, seeing any trend in fines? Like, are some of the same people paying fines? Did we go back and give a second one or is these, are these normally just one time?
We're pretty soft-hearted, so we'll, we'll give you a couple warnings, even though we're not supposed to. And we said this year, we were going to draw a line in the sand. We weren't going to do any citations. But we, we gave up until July the 2nd, I remember, I, I recall. From the 27th to the 2nd, we kept going out and saying, look, have we come back? Have we come back? So some of the ones that we went back to that received fines this year are people that we had warned from the 27th through the 2nd. But to give them an additional $1,000 fine, no, we, none of them, to the best of my knowledge, is a repeat customer.
Okay, so those, those folks earned it.
Yeah.
I guess I was just curious, Chief, sorry, I'm over here. I was just curious. I know this is the first year that we really increased the fine amount. I just wondered if you, I mean, I'm sure nobody was like thrilled about it for sure, but I just wondered if you had any feedback. I appreciate that you guys did give more citations than you have in the past. I just wondered, are they paying them or do you have any idea?
I don't have any idea because they go to the, once it's, once it's written, it goes into the court system and then we lose track of it. We don't, we don't follow through with them.
Okay, I might try to find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. The next item we have on our agenda is an update on our ARPA recovery plan, as well as some reallocation efforts and some allocation efforts. And with that, Elizabeth, finance?
Great. Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Goldrie from the Finance Department. And so I, we've come to you a couple of times during workshops and provided updates on the ARPA recovery plan. The last plan would have been provided to you for the meeting on August 20th. It was through June 30th. And usually when we do these updates, we also invite community partners to join us so they can tell you firsthand the successes that they're seeing in the community. This time, the Violence Interrupters team has joined us. And so I'd like to introduce Chad Childs from WSU Communities Engagement Institute and Marquita Atkins Woods from Destination Innovation. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Wichita. Good morning, councilmembers and Mayor Wu. If you haven't seen yet, I'm most excited about this group back here in orange. So let's give them a round of applause. All right. So I'm Chad Childs, Prevention Initiatives Manager at Wichita State University's Community Engagement Institute. And let's see. There we go. So Violence Interrupters is a program, a project funded by ARPA and is a community safety project that I think you all are as excited about as I am or you soon will be. This partnership is with, from the city of Wichita with the ARPA funds to Wichita State University's Community Engagement Institute and our partners Destination Innovation and Institute of Development for third-party evaluation. Contracting has been a little bit difficult. I don't know if any of you know about ARPA dollars, but it's tricky. And that's also tricky in awarding ARPA dollars to a community-based organization such as Destination Innovation. This has been a process for Wichita State, who is typically used to handling funding from different, different sources. And the city is as well, but, but then involving other partners gets even more difficult just in terms of, you can't do work if you don't have funding to do the work. And you can't do the work if you don't have funding to pay the people that are going to do the work. And so that's been a little bit of a delay that we've experienced. And so I assume responsibility for that. But it has been something that we, it's been a hard process, kind of behind scenes, to get it going. And now it's going. And now we're really excited about it. Those delays for contracts led to delays for buildings and office space, led to delays for personnel and other resources. But now we're here. And I have to slip out because I have a conflict, which saddens me because I want to hear this presentation from our partners. But this is a, this is the most excited I've ever been about a city of Wichita funded project. It really is for community safety. This is where we need to be and this is where we need to be investing. And I'm so glad that the people that are in the community are solving the community's problems. So I'm going to pass it now to Prakel and, oh, to, to Marquita, sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, Marquita Atkins.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, thank you.
So my name is Marquita Atkins Woods. I'm the founder and executive director of Destination Innovation, Inc., which started out as a hub, or still is a hub of youth leadership development. We're home to Camp Destination Innovation that teaches kids careers outside of traditional norms with an emphasis on entrepreneurship and STEM. We're home to Root the Power that teaches kids about civic engagement and voter engagement, and we do also do environmental justice. Root the Power has their vote mob coming up November the 2nd, and you guys will all get invitations to attend. And it'd be at the Urban League of Kansas, and that's where we celebrate voting. And we line up all of our first-time voters in front of us and go vote together to show that that 18 to 35 demographic is being prepared and ready to vote. We don't puppet our kids in any of our programs, so we just teach them and educate them. So they host candidate forums, they host events, they are powerful, and they work on a national level. Progeny, progeny are youth touched by the juvenile justice system, that we teach advocacy and how to change policy in a way it impacts, sorry, in the way that impacts them. Progeny works on a local, state, and national level. I actually just got an email this morning wanting one of our young women to come to the DOJ to talk about the power of our program and why they should be invested in, and she's also going to be featured on CBS, so I'm really, really excited for her. Word to Life is our mental health program. It's a part of our progeny program. We're using spoken word and music to showcase to young people, and this was after Cedric Lofton passed away. And we did a Who Do You Call event a couple of years ago, and happy to say that we're shifting. There are people to call now, back then it was not. And so our Word to Life is based around mental health and giving young people an outlet using spoken word and music as a means for them to express themselves. It's been successful in the middle schools. We went through Future Radio Advocates to be a part of the middle school program. They're asking for us to come back, and now we're at Sowers. And the principal of Sowers sent us an email to show how much has changed the youth life there. And then now we have Cure Violence. Like Chad said, it was a labor of love and leaning into discomfort to get it up and going, but once we got the funding to get it going, we hit the ground running. Our first hire was Brackel Chamberlain, who moved away from Wichita to Dallas and came back for this position. She has been proof positive that we did not make a wrong decision. She's a fierce leader, she's powerful, and our Cure Violence program has hit the ground running as soon as we hired them all. Brackel, I'm going to leave it to Brackel to brag, but I'm going to give a humble brag, especially since they're in the room. I'm super proud of you guys for taking on a new project. I'm proud of the heart that you have in this work. You're proof positive that skills are transferable. And you guys, the leadership has been tremendous, and the impact that you've already had on young people has been tremendous. Seeing you guys out there in those orange shirts, and when people mention the orange shirts, and how happy they are when you walk through their doors. I want you all to be affirmed in that, whether we continue to give funding or not, you guys have made an imprint in the city in such a short period of time. So on that note, I'm going to hand it over to Brackel. And like, we like to say we are impacts over optics. We like to build and make impact better than we like to take the picture. But when impact and optics come into alignment, it's a beautiful thing. And right now, we're in alignment with all the work that we do at DI, and we're happy to have Cure Violence to be a part of this work.
My name is Brackel Chamberlain, and I'm the program manager. I'm so excited to be here today, you guys, and to be able to talk about my team. I'm really blessed to be leading this team. I have great, well, very strong site supervisors, I have a strong staff, and I'm so happy to see what we're doing in the community. Just some facts that, from what we've done so far, we've served 61 families through referral and outreach services, 12 families in District One. Of those 12 families, 19 kids have been served through mediation services, 12 families through mediation in District One, and 10 families served through mediation in District Three. Four families have been served through outreach in the Plainview area. Five gun violence mediations preventing retaliations have taken place. Three known fights prevented that could have escalated to gun violence in Old Town, which also led to some of the nightclub owners requesting our presence and inviting us to come in. 10 known incidents were prevented from escalating to gun violence. Two issues that constitute a spillage, according to the Cure Violence model, have taken place. There were four community partnerships added to offer support services for mental health, housing, food insecurity, and ministerial support. Now, some of the highlights, we're continuing to raise awareness within the community and building relationships. One of the really important things that we're doing is, sorry, within Cure Violence, we have several integrated services that we provide, and, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, I'm... So basically, we're using our, we're leveraging our relationships within the community, looking at social media, following incidents that happen on social media. Our staff leverages their relationships within the community to follow those incidents back to the schools and our target areas. Once they follow them back there, they contact the, they contact the people involved and mediate. We've also, we've also been in, I mean, we've also been mediating a situation that's involved 16 individuals who've had a longstanding conflict within the community, and it's been the source of a lot of gun violence in the community. My staff was able to get them in the room and mediate the situation along with their parents, which was monumental. And on top of that, we've been able to stay abreast of that. We're on day 13 of all the people or all the children that were in that room with no conflicts. And so it's happened because we've continued to follow up and follow the model of CBG, and along with that, we've built relationships with them. It's helped us within the schools to expand our partnership with USD 259. We've, the teachers receive us well, they're happy to see us come, and the principals and everything. And what's happening is, when something goes on in the community, our team goes out there and we trace it back to where it's going to, where we know it's going to, where we know something's going to happen. And then we take that, that information, and we actually build relationships with the individuals, and we're able to communicate that with them in a way that they understand and they're receptive. Even with the parents, it's been a really, a big source of conflict with the parents because of what's going on, and my team is so strong in their relationship building that they're able to be effective and impact the situation by getting to the root cause of the problem, so I'm really proud of that. We've been strengthening our community relationships and increasing public safety, and we're becoming known in the community and recognized. I actually went to the Outwater Center to pick up something, and someone stopped me and asked me about a shooting and told me that, oh, I knew Cure Violence was going to be on top of that. So I do appreciate hearing that. And our parents and participants are appreciative.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about our outside evaluation. We're working with Dr. Tasha Parker at the Institute of Development, who is in the room back there. Wave, Dr. Parker. So they're third-party evaluators, critical for measuring impact and effectiveness, valuable for both ongoing and improvement and final outcomes. The benefit of a third-party evaluation, they have objectivity and credibility, they definitely help us with expertise and best practices, and comprehensive data collection and analysis, they keep us accountable. How third-party evaluation improves project success, identifies strength and areas for improvement early, data-driven recommendations for course corrections, helps align project activities with intended outcomes, supports evidence-based thinking, I'm sorry, evidence-based decision-making. And Dr. Parker, did you have anything you want to add? Perfect, okay. Where is the, oh, thank you. I'll get up here and mess it up. So looking ahead, the team has been assembled, the team is equipped and assigned, the team is trained, the team has been gaining trust and building relationships with WPD, the schools, and the hospitals, and I believe we have Victoria from Via Christi here today. And community building and strengthening for peace, again, we say, impact over optics is super important to us. As a whole, one of our values at DI, we can't advocate for a healthy community unless we're healthy on the inside. And I stand firm by that. There's too many organizations that internally are toxic, but on the outside, they're trying to advocate for healthy communities. We don't want to be that type of organization. So you can't save the world until you take care of home first, and we're very, very adamant about taking care of home. We lean into discomfort and not disrespect, and we want to emulate and showcase the best practices so we can show the community what it looks like to have a healthy community. And I did forget to add this in the beginning. One of the things that we are doing as an organization is that we're making sure that, even though we have city funding, we're still applying for funding to help secure this programming. We recently got funding from Kaiser Permanent Day, $60,000 to do research on gun violence. And so Dr. Parker is partnering with that on us as well, as well as Chad and his team over at Wichita State. So that is it. Again, I hope you find value in this program. We are happy that the city see the need for the investment. You hear me say it all the time, it's cheesy, but Wichita is beautiful in all its parts. And when we invest in all the communities that typically don't get looked at, we create a better Wichita, that's creating a better Kansas, that's creating a better, you know, country, and so we're the heart of this, we're the heart of this country. And so again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you about this program. I don't like failure. I learn from it, but I don't like it. And I'm, and we're going to be sure these people, and again, I want to reaffirm, have so much heart in this work. And when she talked about that instance of having those 16 youth and their parents in that space, I walked in that space bringing pizza, and the tension was thick in the air. And they were pouring so much love and so much education and discipline into these young men, that some of them left the space crying, because all they need to see, and I know this from mentoring young people who are on the edge all the time, all you have to do is bust the bubble of what they think their life is, and exposed to the, all the opportunities that they have in this world. It changes their life. Our outcomes don't lie. We have young people working all across this city, starting nonprofits and leadership positions, changing policies. So all you have to do is show them something different, and it's a catalyst to change these young people's life. And these people out here are doing life-changing work, so thank you for giving us this space. Guys, have any questions? Yes, sir?
And Marquita, appreciate the presentation here. If we can go back to slide 43 real quick. What's 43?
Slide, what, what's that number again?
Okay, you say there are the bottom bullet point, four community partnerships added. What community partnerships have you guys worked on in that regard?
So for mental health services, I've reached, we've reached out to Shay Franklin. She's going to partner with us for mental health services. For housing, we're reaching out, we're using our services at the Outwater Center, Mrs. Ty is her name, but there's, I think the services are, is it Horizons? It might be Horizons, Miss Ty? Children's First, that is it. Children's First, thank you for that. For food insecurity, I actually, I have it in my phone, it's a contact in my phone, I do apologize, but it's an app where I reached out to someone in the community, and there's an app where we can, two-on-one, we can go to two-on-one, but the app is actually specific to where we can direct people within our community to get the closest access to food.
We're also working with workforce community to provide training and do wraparound services to make sure that if people are missing, not a lack of appointment, to be able to get them employed. So we're, we're building. We just got up and running about three months ago, so we're hitting the ground running and running fast.
Yeah, you guys have done a lot of good work so far, and so it looks like you're not just trying to deal with the violent incidences and squash those, it's also, let's attack the root causes for a lot of the violence that we see in the communities.
Absolutely. The look that we have is in our, within our leadership and with the team as a whole, they are directly from the communities that are impacted. They are integral parts of the community that are impacted. One of the things that I love about our site supervisors is that they have a following that is so large that they can put up a post and say, be here at such and such time for this event, and people are going to show up because they respect and value them so much in their communities. And so again, we firmly believe that our community are the experts of their own experiences, and they have been major to connecting us to opportunities. I think you guys got a TikTok famous guy to come out and speak to, Adrian Harding, to speak at one of the schools, and the kids went crazy, and, and his manager, AJ, forgot, wants to partner, partner with us on, on work. And so what we're trying to do is be strategic and thinking about all of the needs of the community and making sure that we have wraparound services. So not only are we thinking about the root, we're thinking about the future and what we can do to make sure that they, again, bust the bubble and see the opportunities that are available.
Yeah, my kid's a big fan of Mr. Harding, so.
That's pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah. Could, could we go to slide 45 real quick? Can we get maybe the good doctor to come up and talk about some of the third-party evaluations here and the process she goes through that?
Absolutely.
If you're comfortable.
Yeah, so what specific questions do you have?
Just what, could you just walk through the process of evaluation, just how you measure?
So we will be doing both process and outcomes, so how the program has been implemented and the impact of it. A lot of participatory collaborative. We have, I have some in the back, a little QR code for the community to give us impact, I mean, input, like on satisfaction, recommendations. It is really important to collect stories and not just numbers, because most of the evaluations for these models is just numbers.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, you guys have done good work. I especially want to thank you, helping with the Plainview March. You guys were out there knocking doors, passing out flyers, did the lion's share of the work, and it was a great turnout, and a lot of that credit goes to you guys for the work that you did trying to help with that. So I appreciate everything you guys have done so far, and I look forward to seeing some continued success with this program.
I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Hoheisel, sorry. Thank you all so much. From the time I got onto council and trying to find good applicants to start this program, seemed like it was taking a little bit longer, but appears that it was worth the wait. So I really appreciate all of the hard work that you guys are doing and hope for your continued success.
I just want to thank you also. I think we've got a couple instances where the police department, police chiefs have said you've mitigated some incidents already. So that's affecting people's lives directly, it's affecting our staff, and so you are making a difference, and thank you very much. Very innovative. I think there's a great use of ARPA funds, so thank you.
And I would like to note that I think one of the difference between this program, they have done a really good job pre-implementation, leveraging relationships. So I think as we continue to evaluate quarterly, we will see how that has impacted satisfaction, but overall, like feeling of community because of the work that they did ahead, before they even had to.
Yeah, I've been working with Stephanie Rol, who's also doing this asset on the community for the Step Up Initiative around mental health and juvenile justice system. And she also worked with the Cure Violence Program in New York, and so she's been giving me best practices where they feel that, where they think they want it, to be able to utilize in this space. And I'm also working with another Cure Violence Program in South Carolina, one in Louisiana and one in California. So just getting all the best practices, what work when it doesn't work, and trying to wrap it around in Kansas, because we're not like those bigger cities, but just sharding it down to impact Kansas in a positive way.
You're an outstanding leader, so keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
I didn't have any questions, I just wanted to say, great job, wonderful presentation. Great job, Brackel. Did a good job with that. All of the Violence Interrupters, you all are doing a... All of the Violence Interrupters, you all are doing a magnificent job. I hear about those dudes and ladies in the orange shirts all the time. Just keep up the good work. This is, I mean, already in this short amount of time, working even better than what, when me and Councilmember Hoheisel were on those calls talking about what could be. This is a beautiful thing. This is something that we, we have to keep supporting because the impact is, is there even now. So thank you. Keep up the great work.
I have several questions. Great job again for the presentation and thank you all for showing up to many of our community building events and just showing up for our youth. Can you talk about how many people are involved currently hired as part of the program? Can you give us a little bit of a timeline? As you mentioned, it's just been three months and the results are just three months' worth of work. And can you also talk about how now three months are in the bag? What is the timeline, timeline now moving forward?
Right now, we have 13 people on staff. So far, well, up until now.
We have 13 people on staff and then we have some people, the leadership team from DI that is also assisting. So we, we give a quarter or so, a little bit more of our time to help. Yeah, go ahead, Raquel.
So they, they operate out of two sites, right? So there's two site supervisors. There's a program manager. And there's three Violence Interrupters per site and there's two.
Community outreach.
Per site.
And so far, we haven't been able to, we have been able to do a lot. But because of the, the talent on my team and the relationships they have within the community, we're able to do so much more. We're able to network. Everybody brings something to the table that is very valuable and unique. And because of that, we're able to grow and expand. So over the next, you know, three to six months, right now, we're working with the situations that are going on with USD 259. We're all approved as volunteers by now so that we're able to follow our participants. And we want to be very clear on our intentions and what we're doing there. We protect and preserve our, the privacy of our participants. And we, we follow them and we give them a safe space. And not only are we working with them at school, we're working with them at home too. So over the next three to six months, we plan to continue to follow the situations that we are mediating right now, but then also expand over into whatever comes, like as situations arise within the community, we strategically are adjusting our, our plans to be able to address them all.
And I think one of the things, outcomes that we talked about after they had those young people in a room and having the parents in the room, we understood that those parents have a need too. And so speaking about building a parent support program, so while the young people are in that space, getting poured into, the parents can be poured into. And we can come up with support assistives to help these, these mothers and fathers navigate, working with their kids. So this is something we talked about in the background that we wanted to do. We are also looking forward to, we've been doing a bunch of training. I am education, really big on education. So we went through the Cure Violence Program. I think the one that we got coming up now is to learn how to work the database. So they've been in a lot, a lot of training. Want to give them a shout out for that. Because sometimes our training goes into a Saturday and they have been committed. They ask great questions. They're totally engaged, which when you're doing six hours a day of training, sometimes six days a week can be online. Zoom is taxing. But right now, they're also a part of Urban Professionals Leadership Program. So again, we're, want to give them all the tools to be successful. I'm a firm believer that if I don't give them all the tools to be successful and they fail, that's on me. But if we give them all the tools, I'm not going to even speak failure into their existence. So I'm not even going to say that's on them. We're not going to let them fail.
We're also expanding into the community. So we want to see and do more within the community because the goal of the CVG model is to empower the community and mobilize the community. So as we're, we have a small, a small staff, but they have a big impact. So we're going to be moving forward into the community to try to do more. And the same things that we're doing with the high-risk, high-risk individuals, we want to build up our community to be able to do the same.
And I should add, I just, some other violence prevention work. And I think this is a unique opportunity. So the state of Pennsylvania, right now, we're investigating if these types of services will be reimbursable by Medicaid. Right? So the work that we're doing here in Wichita could really set a standard for the state, which is why it's so important.
Can you also share, you keep talking about the investment and talk about the funding and, and the, how each pocket is funded and what you still need moving forward?
So you're talking about each program? Cure Violence, okay. So with Cure Violence, one of the things that I feel like, when you're putting your life at risk and when you're putting yourself in the middle of violence, I, I'll use WPD as an example. I do feel like they're grossly underpaid for the work that they're going to do. And this is something that I sat on a national conversation with Cure Violence and the Violence Interrupters. Is one of their complaints is that they were, in the nonprofit world, they think that you have to live in a deficit in order to do this work and you cannot pour from an empty cup. And at our organization, we are very much, we're very about making sure that people receive equitable pay because you have to be able to sustain, sustain yourself, not just financially, but mentally. And you know, if we're working with the community, again, we have to take care of home first so that they are, have everything they need to go out there and do the work they need to do. I don't want them to be burnt out. I don't want them to feel undervalued. I don't want them to be underpaid. So I want to make sure that I create a space for them to be able to get raises. We underestimated, because we're new to doing this particular work. And we're a small nonprofit, so we didn't have 401Ks to start off with. And they gave us the ability to issue 401Ks to our team. But we underestimated how much it would cost. So making sure that they can, again, pay themselves first and create an investment for their future will help with job security. So being able to properly fund the 401Ks and get that activated. We're also looking into insurance plans right now. Right now, we just have our, we have a small team, so we only had eight people on staff. And we all went to the health market, chose our insurance and we paid 20% of their insurance. And right now, we are researching group insurance since we have a bigger staff to see if it's cost-effective for us to do those things. The events that they want to throw. Always dreaming caviar, but I work with sardines. But making sure that we're doing community, we make it look like caviar though. But we do. That is my motto. We, we work with sardines, but we're going to give caviar every single time. And that comes with community support. People, sponsorship, getting credible sponsors to sponsor that work, to supplement the funding that we're getting and building out relationships that people see that this program is worth investing in. And so we also want to make sure that, one of the things we want to do, and we did put into our proposals, that we want to put murals on the South Side. We're, we're meeting with artists and one of the murals that we're going to have is going to, I call it a forever memorial. I myself lost my little cousin to gun violence at 14 years old, almost two years ago. And his name was Forever. And we're going to have a memorial for young people that we lost to gun violence on one side. And then on the other side, it's going to speak to liberation. What does it look like to have a healthy community? What is the community we envision? So it's just going to be about joy. So we can see both sides of what we lost and what we stand to gain by not making sure that this doesn't happen to another young person. And so art and social justice work go hand in hand. And we want to be able to showcase that and uplift that in our work. So again, any investment, and again, we're doing our due diligence to make sure we supplement the funding that you guys give us. And making sure that we can sustain this program. I think that this program is valuable to the city. And I'm not just being biased. There was a need, you guys fed the need. And we want to make sure that it stays sustainable and that we're doing right by our team to make sure that they stay fulfilled. Another thing that we are looking at, at doing and we want to implement is a trauma care plan for our team. Just to make sure that, again, this work is hard. I've been doing this a long time and I know how hard and taxing it can be to hear people's stories and not be able to save everybody. And so we want to make sure that we have a trauma care plan. So our, our, our staff knows how to decompress and knows how to reset and restore. And that's just a fraction of the things that we want to do.
And it should be noted, like this, the way the program is designed, it operates off in these unique areas. And as we continue to see how the program is impacting the city, it's likely that we may need to scale it. Right? So there may be a need for additional funds if we find that we are seeing violence go down drastically in these areas or perceptions of community safety and trust. That could be a sign that, you know, there should be additional investments in other areas of where the program is operating.
Mayor, real quick, the initial investment from the council was one and a half million towards this.
And I do want to add, I had a discussion with people that do Cure Violence and I'm, I'm a researcher, so I've been doing a lot of research. And one of the things that was noted is that some cities have Cure Violence people that specifically only work at the hospital. Like that is the program, that is the program that is funded. So I was told that we're taking on a, a, a big bite, doing the hospitals and doing our Cure Violence work. And so just wanted to make sure that the council knew that in other cities, they have just funded Violence Interrupters to be in the hospital. We are, again, we're ready to do this work. I just want to make sure that it's sustainable and that we're not burning our team out. So it might, in the future, we might need to hire more VI's on the team. And that's to be able to cover day and night.
And last but not least, we get questions about this very often regarding youth violence. And they always look to one of us on the council for what are the solutions? And so I often talk about, there are multiple organizations doing great work, including you all. So what would be your answer to when we see gun violence, when we see youth violence, when we see resorting to violence? The big magic question is, what can we do to solve it?
So I'm a firm believer in order to cultivate good fruit, you got to start with the roots. And that's the reason why I chose to work with young people. Progeny was named by the first cohort of youth that we worked with. Progeny literally, they wanted adults to know, we are what you created. And so one of the first sources that we have to look at, and when people ask me, what's wrong with you? What's wrong with you? I ask, what's wrong with us? What is the world we giving them? Young people mirror what they see. And I said this at a city council meeting before, our young people see more in a five-minute scroll than any of us have ever seen in our life. They get joy, they get violence, they get something funny, they get something educational, they get something they have no business seeing at all. And it cycles back in again. We have no clue what that's doing to their brains. We have no clue what it's doing to our brains. But they have a worldview. And they see adults, they see systems, they see us truly for who we are. And so if we are a society right now that's perpetuating violence, it's no surprise that our kids are violent. If we want to know why a 14-year-old is shooting another 14-year-old, I would ask you, how did that 14-year-old get a gun in his hand? If we're thinking about why they're so violent and fighting, I would go back to our kids being, you know, during COVID. And we did a whole session, Progeny did a whole session during COVID about what is going to happen when these kids go back to school and have no socialization. Right now, we're missing kids from USD 259 that we don't even know where they went or what happened to them. And so we also have to think about the systemic things that they're facing. Poverty, addiction in, in parents. Some parents are only giving, we always say, parents are getting a certain tools to be parents and not everybody has a full toolbox. Are we getting the right parents in the room so that we can give them the proper support that they need? Foster care to prison pipeline, school to prison pipeline. There, there's all these pipelines that exist that get our kids, you know, incarcerating. The expectation that kids should not have a range of emotions. We have kids that are, that we don't know what kind of trauma they come from. And I'm always one of those people, I'm wary when we place kids in a box. Because when we do that, we miss out on kids that might live in a prettier box, but are still being abused, are still dealing with parents that have addictions, that still might be having parents that may be abusive. And we miss out on them because we don't think that they fit in the box of a child that is impacted. All of our kids are one step away from being impacted. And we have to be cognit of that. We also, again, and I'm a firm believer, have to show them a world that exists outside the one that they know. And that's what we do at DI. We're a youth adult partnership. I'm a vessel that gets the young people the opportunities they deserve, but they tell me what they need and I listen. And I create spaces for them to feel their power. Often, we go to communities, we go to youth and we go, we want you to feel empowered. We want you guys to feel empowered. Well, I actually want them to have power. And right now, I'm a part of a national fellowship with, leadership fellowship that I got selected for. And my research and what I'm doing is discovering how can we create wraparound services other than, because sometimes when you're working on campaigns with young people, we pay them. But how can we teach them how to harness their power? And how can we teach them how to give them wraparound services that sustain them, more than just throwing money at them and just sitting them on a panel? How we're working with their trauma while they're doing this work? How we making sure that they have opportunities to stand in their power? I'm a strong advocate and I, I don't feel like DI's name has to be on everything. I don't feel like my name has to be associated with everything about us getting over the finish line. So there's a lot of background work we do that you don't see our name attached to, but we gotten over the finish line with it. But making sure that these young people have a voice in this work and that they're sitting at tables like this to understand how policies, understand how processes work. I think it's super important that these young people, no matter where they come from, have a city where they belong, feel like they belong. And they feel like they have a city that's invested in them and that a city that cares about them. And showing up to their events, showing up to the things that they do shows these young people that you guys actually care. And I think that's super important. So again, and I'll let Dr. Parker speak again to the systemic issues, but systemically, we have to be cognit of the issues that we're handing to young people and expect them to navigate and show up with a smile on their face and be well behaved in school. There's a lot of things that could be avoided if we see the human in them. And there's a lot of things that could be avoided if we see the human in our educators too. And know that we're all carrying trauma into that space, so.
You know, just kind of circling back to your, like, there's no one answer. Like gun violence is a public health systemic issue. And to solve it looks different across the system, like on an individual level. Like we have to think beyond change the individual and gun violence stops, right? Because if I'm underhoused, I don't live in safe neighborhoods, trauma happening across the system, these are all factors that contribute to it. So there's not one answer. It depends on what level of the system, right? A macro level answer is different than a meso level.
And one thing I want to speak to with our team, we don't really brag about everything that we're doing, but the relationships that my team has with the, with our high-risk participants and the parents is very intimate and they're deeply involved with them. We follow up with these kids every day that are high-risk individuals, every day. We contact them, we take them places. One of our, just for an example, one of our VI's has a shop, a custom shop. So he took some participants to the shop to see what he does and just to expose them to something different. We had a participant who got jumped by some people that were not in the room. And they took his shoes and our organization purchased him some new shoes to deter him from retaliating, but also to let him know that we see him, we appreciate him and we care. And I think that what's most significant is that we're listening, we're paying attention, we're talking to the parents and we're adjusting and shifting for their needs. And so when you look at funding, a lot of this is on us, you know? And so when you look at funding, a lot of this is on us, you know? We're doing it, it's a labor of love, but we're doing things that you don't even see, you know? Just because it's, our heart is in it, and we really want to make an impact to public safety, and we want to see more graduations than funerals for these individuals. So I think that's important to note as well. And then our team, like, literally, is 13 of us, right? But we are riding for this city, we really are. And when you talk, when you ask, you know, about solutions, I think we take every situation and everybody we come into contact with, and we just try to solve their problems and try to remove their barriers, and in hopes that, you know, they pay it forward, and the impact that we make on them pays it forward so that, you know, when they come to that situation, according to the CBG model, you know, we change the norms and they change their behavior, right? And that it can impact others. So we're a small group, but we're hoping that there's a residual impact by the impact, or a residual impact on the community by what we plan in them individually, you know? And then working with the parents, you know? There's no instruction manual to parenting, and a lot of parents are afraid to speak up and ask for help, right? But our team is, we meet them where they are, and we're so connected to the community that they're able to come to us, they're reaching out to us now, you know, with their challenges. So I think that kind of speaks to what you asked.
I think they're creating genuine safe spaces. Raquel tagged me in a post that, that a parent put up in Riesee. They've been tagging me in the posts that they've been getting from the community. And one of them that stands out is that, you know, we finally got somebody that, people that are the real deal, that are really doing the work. And getting buy-in from a community is sometimes hard because of lack of trust. And they build up trust in this community. And to speak to a little bit, Raquel was saying in nonprofit terms, there's a lot of work that we do that is not data-driven, that is not quantitative. There's a lot of stories that we cannot put in a report. And, but those stories still exist. And we talk about that a lot in nonprofit. I mean, you don't talk about the kid that you picked up in the middle of the night because their parents kicked them out. You don't talk about, well, I do talk about this, but how hard it is to found housing for young people who have been displaced, in particular, girls who have been displaced. You don't, you don't talk about these things a lot because we try to stick to the data when we're doing reports, but those stories are there, and a lot of the stuff, we don't get paid for. There's things that we pay for out of pocket, just because when a person or a young person calls you and tells you they're hungry, you want to make sure they get fed. So a lot of stuff, you just pull it out of your pocket and do. Even when we were, and I tell her this all the time, stop spending your own money. You know, we're working on, you know, getting a process that where the funding comes to us easier. But with ARPA funding, there's a bunch of I's and T's that you got to dot and you got to cross. And so even though it's difficult, I understand the accountability factor that goes behind it to make sure that there's never a question of why and how we're using our funds. Integrity matters to me. And so they went out and bought their own shirts to start off with because we're in the process of getting our shirts approved, approved. And I'm like, don't do that, but they did because they care about it so much, and they want people to easily identify them. That is how committed this team is to this work.
Mayor, thank you so much. That's actually probably a good segue into the next segment, segment of our ARPA recovery update, some reallocation, some dollars. So thank you so much to the Cure Violence and the Violence Interrupter teams for coming out. Thank you.
All right. So many thanks to the Violence Interrupters team for joining us today to provide that update. And again, if you're interested in downloading, if you're online and you're interested in downloading the recovery plan that we filed with Treasury in July, you can just go to wichita.gov and search for ARPA, and you will find our ARPA page. That report provides information about each of our projects through June 30. As Troy mentioned, we're in a critical phase when it comes to reallocations, so the rest of this presentation will be forward-facing. And this pie chart is an overview of how the funding is currently allocated. The city has allocated most of its funding in three major categories. Negative economic initiatives at 20 million, initiatives at four and a half million, and then infrastructure projects at 46.9 million. And I'll step us through a pie chart for each of those categories in a little bit. As of last Wednesday, 36.7 million of the award has been spent. 4.9 has been encumbered, which that means it's tied up in a purchase order or alike. It's encumbered against the budget. And then 8.1 million has been obligated, and that includes city council action that was taken last week regarding the branch libraries. So in total, 49.7 million dollars has been obligated. And for the sake of this presentation, for future discussion, we'll talk about, I'll refer to things being obligated that could be encumbered, obligated, or spent. So things, and then the balance of the project is unobligated, and that's 22.7 million dollars. It's about a little over 30% of the total award. So what is the timeline for obligations? The U.S. Treasury deadline is 12/31/24, and there's a report that's due with an end date of that period. That's when everything has to be completed. One thing that's unique about the city of Wichita compared to a lot of local governments is that we're on a calendar fiscal year. A lot of local governments are on a fiscal year that starts on July 1. So we're going to be closing our year at the same time that we're finishing ARPA obligations. For the sake of our fiscal year closing and getting all of these projects approved by the city council, we've set a deadline of November 18 for all items to be on the city council agenda in order to meet year-end closing requirements. And at this point, for people to get those items on the agenda, they'll need to be submitted in about seven weeks. So we're, it's, it's kind of a sprint to the finish at this point. What happens if the funds aren't obligated? If the funds aren't obligated, we must return those funds to U.S. Treasury. So I think I've already covered this a little bit, but an obligation is a case where we have an order, such as a purchase order, a contract, or award, an agreement, a similar transaction that requires payment, and the final category is an inter-agency agreement that needs to meet a number of conditions from Treasury. And these are per their rule about obligations. An obligation is not a project initiation. We have a number of projects that have been initiated that haven't been obligated, that does not count. It's also not a contract or agreement that's under development. RFP responses that we received and have a recommendation but don't have a contract yet, or a board of bids recommendation after the board of bids, a contract needs entered into. So it's pretty strict as to what an obligation is. Just generally, there needs to be a contractor agreement in place. So now that I've provided that really kind of scary background on obligations, I'd like to go into each of the categories. So this is our initiatives category, and this is where the Violence Interrupters project is. From the outset, we, the project plan had 1.5 million dollars for a Violence Interrupter program, and that was intended to be a three-year project. We've, this is the first time the city of Wichita has had a Violence Interrupters project. And what we've since learned is that that funding would get you about halfway through the three-year program. So rather than funding three years, it would fund about half. And so an estimated additional allocation of 1.6 million would result in a three-year program. And that program would be funded by ARPA through the end of September of 2026. Overall, the initiatives category would be increased by 0.3 million, and so here's what it would look like. So that category would bump up a little from 4.5 million to 4.8 million. So, see update on initiatives.
Can I ask questions regarding the initiatives portion really quick?
Yes, you bet.
So what, obviously Violence Interrupters, fire optimization, what are other areas where initiatives would fall under?
Yeah, those were the only two in this category, and they're separate from the negative economic initiatives projects because on those, those we went out and we did an RFP for the original workforce and small business projects. These are city of Wichita-driven projects. That's, and this is how we set it up, this is the pie chart that we developed in 2021. So it's just those two.
And prior to these two being the only two initiatives, were there other lists of initiatives that are city of Wichita-driven?
It was just these two always. Good question. Any other questions about this category?
Yes, a couple more.
Oh, you bet.
So the 1.5 million for Violence Interrupters was to fund it from when, to April 2025? So what's the starting date?
Yeah, so in, the original plan was developed in 2021, and the concept was to fund it for three years in '24, no, sorry, '22, '23, and '24. But the program, as Chad from Wichita State mentioned, there was, there was a lot to the setup of the program, establishing the program. So, but, but we could extend it through 2026 if there's a contract in place. And so then it would be a '24, '25, '26 project.
And if I may, just a little bit of background. Originally, the plan was for one spot in northeast Wichita, but we did expand to cover two spots, including down in south Wichita in the Plainview and South City area where there's a number of institutional gang violence there as well. So that added to costs from the original estimates.
So by all technical purposes, the 1.5 million, even though the project started in 2021, didn't really kick off until January 2024, or when in 2024?
I think that the, I think that the, I think that the first invoice I saw was for activity in December of '23, but it wasn't, it was just the starting. Does that make sense? It wasn't the full-blown project. So I would say quarter, quarter one, quarter two of '24.
So by all technical purposes, then, December 2023 to April 2025 would fund, would be 1.5 million dollars?
I think that's the estimate. That's when this current allocation would be expended.
And then the ask is for the additional 1.6 million, which would be from April 2025 to September 2026?
Yes.
And are there any other, so fire optimization is, there's no further ask from the fire department?
Yeah, that project's complete.
Sorry, a couple more questions. So I'm asking because I know that we have fire stations that we've allocated in a timeline. I understand the case study for Violence Interrupters. I'm just asking about fire and stations.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So the reason why we would be able, even just from a technical standpoint of the regulations of this particular grant, is that if we have, if we were to extend the contract with Violence Interrupters to September 2026 and allocate more funding for that, that project, that's allowable. However, everything, you cannot obligate payroll expenses for your own entity. So you could encumber a capital purchase, that is something that's encumbered, but payroll expenses aren't encumbered. So you couldn't use this funding for any expenditures after December 31st.
And does the money have to be expended by 2026?
Yeah, by the end of 2026.
So then what would happen to, I wish I could have asked that question. What would happen to Violence Interrupters beyond, so October of 2026?
Yeah, so one of two things, if their funds were fully expended by September 30 of 2026, if there were a contract extension and additional budget, they could, if we could extend, extend that for up to three months, we just prefer to have our funding end in the end of that quarter so that we can wrap up the grant. If the project were unsuccessful, which seems unlikely, but if you had a project that were unsuccessful, you could replace it with another sub, that, that sub recipient with another sub recipient who serves as a successor to provide services that have the same scope. And we have done that once.
I'm just asking these questions about sustainability. So obviously, we just got a case study that it is working, it is an important investment, but it's just an investment until September 2026. So does this mean that once September 2026 rolls around and this grant ends, even if they don't ask for an additional three months, the program ends? What happens, what's a sustainability model?
John T, do you want to jump in?
Good question, Mayor Wu. Important part of these programs, and you heard the doctor who presented earlier this morning, is the evaluation component. You also heard Marquita Atkins talk about its plans for sustainability, Destination Innovations' plans for sustainability. To answer your question, I don't know that we can predict in September '24 where we will be in September '26, but we will have an evaluation. At that point, we'll have two years of performance, and the city will be in a position to determine whether we want to continue, whether the city wants to continue to invest in the program. Also, what other or outside resources have been identified in investing in the program. I believe Marquita Atkins pointed to a number of, not only local sources that are investing in Violence Interrupters, but she also pointed to Kaiser Permanente, I believe, this morning. And so when we get to the point of ARPA funding expiring, we will be at a decision point where we look at the evaluation, we look at the success or the outcomes related to the program, and also have conversations with CEI and Destination Innovation about its plans for sustainability.
I think that's what worried me, because I was the only one that was identified specifically as Kaiser Permanente, $60,000, not for personnel, but rather gun violence research. So I'm thinking about these Violence Interrupters, and I appreciate everything that they're doing. I want to know that they're going to be sustained if this is something that's working. And it's only funds that end September 2026, do we just say, it's done, over with? Or what is, I guess, their long-term plan once the grant ends? Just like any grants, I'm just worried about grants that fund personnel, and then the work, the good work that they're doing then ends?
Once again, and I appreciate the question, Mayor, it's difficult to predict now what will happen two years from now. But what I can say is we will have an evaluation. And also Destination Innovation, the Community Engagement Institute of Wichita State, will start working towards a sustainability plan. Don't have those answers for you today, but it's something that we've had conversations, ongoing conversations with Community Engagement Institute and Destination Innovation about sustainability. You're absolutely right. Anytime you rely on grant funding for ongoing operational costs, you reach a point where it's no longer sustainable. And so I appreciate the question, and the fact that we're thinking about it today. Because sustainability is, seeing the impact that the program is having in our community, sustainability is going to be a huge part of this as we go forward.
I would jump in, I was going to wait to the end, but since we're talking about it now, I think when we get to that point, I won't be here. I'll be on the other side of the podium. But I would challenge us now and then to consider their funding as important as law enforcement and keep it up as a city. You know, a lot of nonprofits don't get guaranteed funding, but this is a real, well, we saw it. You can see the crime prevention, you can see the intervention, you can see the opportunities that they're bringing community. They work and do the work that law enforcement can't do. They're the ones out there in the streets with the reputations that these young folks respect, and they engage in different ways. It is just as important. It is just as important as law enforcement. And I think it should be continued to be funded by the city council. As well as, you know, they should raise their own funds as well. But it's something that's just important as law enforcement and something that should be sustained by this. We can look historically at what happens when federal or local governments fund great things like these and cut it. When we look at the Weed and Seed Program from the 90s, there was money to not only hire officers, which Wichita did, but there was prevention funds for programs, some that I participated in. There was intervention funds. When all that dried up, those young people were, they did well for a while, but then the opportunities left. State government didn't pick that up, local government didn't pick that up, and the federal government walked away from it. This is an opportunity to change that path and continue to support it. And I would hope that we all see the value in, in doing so. We shouldn't allow that organization and that effort to die.
I might add too, that any organization that relies on one source of funding is not looking at long-term sustainability. So hopefully with their track record of success, the local foundations in Wichita will see that success and they can apply for grants from those foundations and also be funded through different sources, not just the city. So.
All right, ready to move on? Okay, the next major category is negative economic impact initiatives. This was $20 million from the outset. I still vividly remember doing community engagement on this at DAB meetings in 2021 because it was one of the first times that I had gone out and done in-person engagement since the onset of COVID. At the time, the idea was to allocate funding in three major categories. Workforce development, small business development, and affordable housing. And then to have the remainder of the funds to be allocated as we've moved through this project. So the workforce and small business programs, as a reminder, there's 23 projects there with a variety of different community partners. The Child Advocacy Center slice funds their expansion efforts. Then there's the Healthy Corner Store, Affordable Housing, which that's under development. That Humankind Winter Shelter, that was for operations last winter. And then the Landlord Incentive Program, it's one of, it's the smallest one on this pie chart. But it's something to celebrate and point out that I was researching options through U.S. Treasury for ARPA funding of housing programs. And I found that this program has been highlighted as a best practice. So that's kind of fun news. So this bar chart shows what percentage that each project has been spent, encumbered and obligated, or encumbered and obligated. So it's not the size of the project, all of these go from zero to 100. So the ones that are the ones that we should be focusing on as we look at the November 18th deadline are the ones that are navy blue, that have the remainder in navy blue. Those are the riskiest projects. They have the lowest percentage spent obligated or encumbered. And the good news on this slide is that the small business projects are fully expended and that the workforce projects are very close to being fully expended. There's only three of those that are, still have a balance.
Do we have any updates on the Healthy Corner Store Initiative?
That one, Dante's grabbing his microphone.
It's been super frustrating, I'm sure, for everybody.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ballard, for the question. City staff has been working closely, once again, with Wichita State Community Engagement Institute to develop a Healthy Corner Store Initiative program. As Chad Childs mentioned earlier, part of the challenge we've had is the nature of the funding. You might recall that we issued an RFP, I believe, a year, 18 months ago, primarily focused on community-based organizations that we could partner with. The challenge in doing that is that those organizations have limited history administering federal grants. And so took a step back from their RFP process, worked closely with finance staff as well as our outside experts in regard to ARPA funding with O'Brien, and retooled, released an application process. Community Engagement Institute applied for the program or to administer a Healthy Corner Store Initiative program. Over the course of this past summer, has hosted several open houses, has developed a proposal in partnership with local corner stores as well as a K-State Extension Center. And there's a meeting that took place, I believe, a week, 10 days ago to kind of finalize some questions CEI had regarding ARPA funding and how that funding could be utilized. We anticipate in the next 30, 45 days, bringing a proposal, a program forward to council for your review.
Thank you. And the deadlines, December?
Well, really, all contracts and agreements need to go to city council by November 18th.
And will we make that deadline?
Certainly.
Good answer.
So as far as negative economic impact projects, one thing that broadly, we talked about in 2021, there was a lot of discussion about affordable housing. I don't think that people at the time understood what things would look like in 2024. And there's been a lot of headway on the MAC. So this next pie chart I'll show you includes adding a $5 million project for the operation of the MAC. That Healthy Corner Store Initiative, the agreement needs to be finalized in early November to go on the agenda. Affordable housing, which is the portion related to the former public or the public housing, single-family units. Some discussion, there's been a lot of discussion in the last week about an inter-agency agreement for that program, and it's being developed. And then the Child Advocacy Center Subrecipient Agreement has a number of milestones that they need to meet, they need to have met by November 30th, and we will be monitoring that. So that is the to-do list for the negative economic impact projects. And so after those changes, this is what the pie chart looks like. So it's the addition of 5 million for MAC operations and then the elimination of the unallocated category. And this pie chart increases from 20 million to 23.2 million. Any, there are some projects that as they close, they will have a small balance. We won't be adding projects in this category. We would just be, the total could be slightly less than 23.2 as projects are closed with small balances.
In regards to MAC operations, and this might be more for Troy, what gap does that leave for MAC operations over the next, I guess, two years?
So the intent behind this $5 million is funding operations or part of those operations, about $2.5 million a year for 2025 and 2026. If you'll recall, some of the conversations we've had with our, our service providers, right, as we anticipate, it's probably going to be about a $4 million annual operating budget. So that leaves about one to one and a half million dollars, depending on where they can find some cost savings of a gap that, that new, that new 501(c)(3), that new operator will have to bridge that gap between what the anticipated annual operating budget will be and this sort of $2.5 million a year for 2025 and 2026.
I know we've been looking and trying to work with the private sector for donations. Is that going relatively well? Do we have any commitment so far in regards to that?
So I can tell you, we are having really, really good conversations with the private sector, yes. The great thing about sort of this approach, right, is that that new, that new governance structure and that new operator will have somewhat of a two-year runway, so to speak, right, to just focus on operations and not necessarily focus entirely on fundraising, right? So this gives them an opportunity to, at least the conversations we've had, find the best chance of long-term success and sustainability, right? Because they can continue to just focus on operations for those first two years. Yes, there will be some in-kind services that those partners are talking about bringing to the table. I can tell you, yes, we are having some really good conversations with private and other governmental agencies to help respond to the sustainability of the annual operating budget in years 2027 and beyond.
And so that million and a half a year over the next two years, how much of that do we have, have, we identify providers to help cover that gap? So I know we have one deal with one organization that's about $400,000. That'll help take off of that chunk. So where are we at on the other roughly, a little over a million?
Again, about one to 1.5 million dollars, yes. Service providers that are in that space are talking right now about what services they can bring to the table to close that gap. And hopefully, the goal is that it will close that entire 1.5 million dollar gap.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, you ready to move on to the next category? Okay, the last big category is capital projects. I don't have a pie chart for this because they're all capital projects. But the, the bar chart for this one is just like the bar chart for the negative economic initiatives, with the percentage of each project that's spent in green and or encumbered or obligated in magenta. So the projects that are the highest risk at this point are the ones at the top. The navy blue bar charts, the navy blue bars are the most worrisome. And those would be two of the three fire alerting and communications projects and then Patrol West. The good news on this slide is in September, there were a lot of obligations. The winter shelter phase one of the MAC site is about halfway through this slide, halfway through this graph. And then also Alfred, Rockwell, and Angelou branch renovations have been obligated. So progress is being made. So some reallocations that are being considered. In order to meet U.S. Treasury deadlines, these are modeled. This wouldn't change the project, discontinue the project, discontinue the scope or change the scope of the project. This is just how the project is funded. So the first would be on Patrol West to shift 9.13 million to local funding. And the project would continue as is. And then also, there's three fire station and alerting projects. It would shift one of them entirely to local funding and about half of another one to local funding. And the third one would be all in ARPA. And that's based on, this one has two phases of awards. So there's one phase that they're expecting in October and one phase that they're expecting in November. So just the October phase would stay in ARPA. And that, this is related to deadlines. I double-checked. All of these projects have bonding resolutions in place. This is something that we had wanted to keep all of our options open as these projects were initiated. So I'm happy to report that this will be a really easy reallocation. And then the MAC, as I said, phase one for the winter shelter is already allocated. And then phase two of the project is modeled in the next pie chart to add $6 million for the renovation of the facility. So this is the renovation phase of the remainder of the interior of the current building. And this is not really, this is a reallocation because as you remember, this project's already in the CIP. It's having GO funding. So instead of GO, this phase two will have ARPA funding. And then overall, as we continue to close out projects with small balances, they would, any remaining funds would be redirected to cash fund eligible CIP projects. So this is your, a new ARPA pie chart. So in the blue call-up box, the initiatives have been increased by .3 million for the violence interrupters. The negative economic initiatives are increased by 3.2 million for the MAC site. I mean, the negative economic impact initiatives is for MAC operations, excuse me. And then the infrastructure projects is overall decreased by 3.5 million to offset the increases in those other two categories. And just as we wrap up, some things you should be expecting very, you know, in the next few months is a number of items related to MAC, affordable housing, healthy corner stores, we talked about. An amendment for violence interrupters, at the very least for the timeline. And then the bids for the fire station, alerting, and communications projects. So that, that is your reallocation update. Any more questions?
I'm just going to add one more time my concern with grants, whether it's ARPA, federal dollars, or any grants in general. When we are looking at grants, capital improvement projects, to me, make the most sense because it's a one-time cost. When it comes to personnel and ongoing costs, I do not believe that that's responsible to use grant dollars for that. So that, it concerns me, the initiatives portion, because it's a lot of, a majority of it is personnel versus a one-time cost like a new fire station. So that gives me a little bit of angst as I think that the ARPA dollars are supposed to help us with some of these big capital improvement projects that we've maybe have thought about accelerating faster or supplementing with these federal dollars. So this is just Lily's opinion, that's it.
And I would also echo, I think the mayor said everything that I've thought when looking at this presentation as well, is that I would prefer most of the ARPA money being in infrastructure one-time projects as we look on how we want to allocate over, I guess, what, a month now? Because it has to be allocated quick. But that's my only concern is the long-term sustainability of projects that are doing good work, but are there other funding streams that make more sense for that? And, you know, Patrol West shifting 9.13 million, I know maybe the timeline doesn't work, would probably be my understanding. But are there other projects and capital improvement projects we can push up quicker in a timeline, especially for, you know, allocations? That would be my only concern.
Yeah, quickly regarding shifting projects. When we are looking at capital projects to cash fund, those would be projects that have already been initiated and there's already expenditures. So not, at this point, I don't think that the timeline would support initiating a project.
Thank you.
So I wanted to, I'm glad the mayor brought it up. When we look at violence interrupters, we keep talking about grants. If you look at the Cure Violence Model, it's actually based out of several ways throughout the country. It's in mayor's offices, it's in manager's office, it's actually a part of government in other places. Wichita is unique through some of the challenges that we had because initially, we were looking at implementing this out of the manager's office. When council member Hoisele and I were in DC, we met with theirs. Theirs was based out of their district attorney's office.
I believe so. We've also talked to some who it comes out of their health department as well.
Yeah, so this is, I think we should not look at this as the nonprofit grants. This is an actual effort to improve safety, improve community, and empower. This truly should be funded, whether it's ARPA or not, out of our general fund. Like this has to be seen as that important because when it goes away, if it were to go away, if we look at it as just granting a nonprofit, these same people may not have that same support to go out into community and do that. And that's the, the challenge. This should be funded at whatever it is, a million or 1.5 million, out of the general fund, as the same way that we look at the needs of law enforcement because this really is reducing the impact for law enforcement. And I think if we don't look at it in that way, it's going to be a problem going forward. The work that they do is incredible. And the other thing is, Marquita mentioned it a little bit, we were building a Wichita model. It wasn't one that just had folks in the hospital, it wasn't one that just had folks at one site. Throughout the conversations we've had with Cure Violence, we looked at two sites to start with. And how do we continue to train people to work throughout the city? It's going to be a full-city effort. It's something that they're continuing to build right now. And again, if we just look at it as, let's do this through 2026 and that's it, and hope that they can raise enough money to continue this effort. I know they'll raise money, but this should be something that our local government, if we truly care about crime prevention, if we truly are looking at safety and community, that we need to support and not look at it as a grant, but actual obligation to reduce the negative impacts of crime, the work that they're doing. And again, it's not just interrupting what's happening. They're really empowering those young people. And the folks that they've hired, who some people may look at, whatever their records might be, are being empowered as well. So we're all, all around making our community better by that effort. It's not just giving a grant to a nonprofit and hoping that they do some great work. We see that around, but this actual effort truly throughout the country is a part of their government. And I would hope that when the funds run out from ARPA, we consider adopting that as a part of our government as well.
And quick, I agree, and I think they're doing incredible work. And I think you said something, we may disagree in terms of the funding stream. If we believe it's an essential function of government and it's a core function of government, it should be a function of government and not contracted out. And so I think long-term, we can have that conversation. But in terms of us offering grants, I think a permanent sustainability of grant doesn't make sense. And we believe it's a core function of government, we believe that it's going to reduce crime, and I think they are doing good work in doing so, then it should be as a function of government if that's what we believe. Then it should be as a function of government, if that's what we believe it is, and not necessarily outsourced to a third party. And maybe we figure out a way to bring that in-house for long sustainability.
I know there is some concern among some in the, in the community about it being so tied tightly to the city. Part of the, the model is that we give them their independence to kind of work it. We have proper oversight, make sure that the program's doing what we need. It's, it's something councilmember Johnson and I, being so involved in this, have come to understand from the model is a certain degree of independence from the city is viewed as necessary to allow them the freedom to work in the ways that they feel appropriate, I suppose. So we can get into it a little more, we can chat a little more.
I respect that view too, but I think I prefer public-private partnerships rather than just government for the answer for everything. And I think that the will of the city council can change overnight too. And discontinuity at any time. That's why I prefer more, more different funding sources. And a public-private partnership allows more long-term sustainability than just government doing it. Because the will of government can change at any election, and it could be gone. So I think it's a very important program. Like I said, great success. And as they build on the success, I don't think it'll be a problem to create that public-private partnership. Long-term sustainability.
Last comment, I believe it is public safety, that's the core function of government. And so I think there is a role for it, and it is a function of government. And so if it's a function of government, government should do it and in-house it.
I'll just summarize, I think, in what I'm hearing and so that staff has some sort of recommended or some sort of direction. I really appreciate hearing about the MAC, the Multi-Agency Navigation Center, and how that is truly a public-private partnership. We, the city, initially started with a $500,000 investment for operations. And we started looking at, we have to allocate federal dollars into something that will be a little bit more sustainable and helps that new nonprofit get kick-started without the burden of the $4 million in operating. So they already knew 500,000 was gonna come from the city of Wichita now, an additional 2.5 million per year '25, and 2.5 million 2026. That's a direct signal by the city of Wichita and this council saying, this is the public side of this. Now we need private side to step up. And that includes the faith-based community, helping to step up and help us with closing that gap for operating. So I see that as a sustainable model for MAC, which is, I think, what I'm hearing is, public safety is a core function of local government. So therefore, if one of the initiatives is crime prevention and Cure Violence is part of that, how do you look at that more sustainably versus just one federal grant that does run out by 2026? So I think the challenge is, can we have more public-private partnerships where the city makes an investment, which the city is making a 1.5 million dollar investment in Cure Violence? And now we're being asked to make another 1.6 million dollars in Cure Violence. Where is the private side stepping up so that it can be sustainable? Unless it is fully the local government's role. And in that sense, I know that we've had a long presentation about how crime prevention is affected by multiple departments within the city of Wichita, from parks to recreation centers to libraries. So if that's absorbed, how, how does that all play with that ecosystem?
So I'll say, Mayor, thank you for those, that synopsis and the comments. I think we'll take that back and we'll digest that and take those into consideration as we bring this back. But is there any other questions, comments, concerns regarding the presentation on the ARPA update?
Just one real quick, what are some of the CIP projects that we're looking at possibly doing, bumping up and doing some cash funding for?
Right here, so the ones at the bottoms are one that we've already cash-funded. So City Hall Elevators, City Facility Improvements. And then there's also two that are still open, Heavy Equipment Replacement and Fire Apparatus Replacement. So those are projects that we typically finance permanently with cash rather than bonds. So they're all suited for that activity.
Okay, appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Elizabeth, and the Finance Department for the update. The next item we have on the agenda is proposed amendments to the Unified Zoning Code, particularly as it relates to solar and solar farms. And with that, we have our Planning Director, Scott Wade.
Good morning, everyone. Scott Wade from the Planning Department. Because we're at a workshop and because we're talking about solar, just wanted to take a moment to say that the previous presentations have been brilliant. I don't think there's any way this presentation can eclipse them.
Is this really 70 slides here, Scott?
It is, we'll go rather quickly. I will move quickly, because I know we're bumping up against lunch too. So, so, so here's, why we're here today is obviously to collect your feedback, answer any questions. I really appreciate this format because it really allows for a dialogue and we can hopefully thoroughly answer any questions that you have. In order to do that, this is the agenda that I've put together for this discussion. Of course, we can change it up, we can add items at the end. But assuming everyone's okay with this, I'll just keep moving right along. So there's a few disclaimers because this is a rather big topic and I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. So first of all, there are no, there are no solar applications submitted for the city of Wichita at this time. So this is really a discussion about the policy and how should solar, solar farms, industrial-scale solar, utility-scale solar, how should those facilities be addressed and handled in Wichita? I do want to note that there is a possible project that has been discussed with planning staff, and that's in the southwest Wichita area outside the city Wichita city limits. And I'll talk a little bit more about that general area at the end of this presentation. I really want to cover the policy portion, and then we can talk some more about that one. And then also want to note that really the purpose why I'm here is because the county has adopted amendments, the zoning code. Because it's a unified zoning code, there's a question then for the city about, will you adopt the same ones? Do you want slightly different? How do you want to proceed? So that's really the basis for this conversation. And I also want to highlight a really important one at the bottom, which is, we're, we're not here to talk today about accessory uses. So we're not talking about the solar panels that someone would put on their house or on their business. We're not talking about solar panels that, for instance, would be accessory to use, like the ones out at the zoo or at Mays High School. Those aren't the principal uses. We're talking about the big ones that are the primary purposes to get electricity onto the grid. Another disclaimer is that, you know, we don't have a ton of time today. So, but I want to convey that this process started in 2021, perhaps even a little bit before that. So I'm gonna do some highlights and we're gonna move rather quickly through it. But if you have any questions, let me know and I can always follow up. Do want to highlight that this was at the Board of County Commissioners six times and also at the MAPC Advanced Plans nine times. So there's been a thorough amount of discussion from, on that side. In terms of shared documents, there's a number of documents that the city shares with the county. So you have the Unified Zoning Code, you also have the Comprehensive Plan. And what we mean by unified or shared is that both the city and the county have adopted them and that they're the same text, so that therefore it creates the unified code. Now, the Comprehensive Plan is different than the zoning code, and everyone knows that. But the Comp Plan is really about guidance and recommendations. The zoning code is really about regulations and requirements. So now, both of these have been important in the solar discussion, and I'll cover why in just a moment. But more, a little bit more about the zoning code, you're all familiar with that. But its purpose, health, safety, and general welfare, encouraging orderly growth, growth, containing, contains our standards for zoning districts, what you can and cannot do in a given zoning district. And I think perhaps most importantly, it contains the process for considering and regulating land use. So how are they considered? Where is it appropriate? Now, a quick note about this one is, we're here discussing this because the county has adopted amendments, the zoning code. Those amendments are in effect in the county at this time. So the question really for the city is, do you want to stay with what was previous, what is in place right now for the city? Or do you want to adopt similar to what the county has done?
Scott, I have a quick question, just because it's applicable right here. How many, how many differences do we have in the Unified Code where the county and the city don't?
At this time, to my knowledge, it's only the solar. And that's just because it was a recent adoption, so it hasn't come to you yet. And that's what this is in anticipation of. But I would note that this has happened before, where we've had a little bit of a difference. So for instance, when the city adopted changes to the zoning code regarding nightclub or daycares, there was a period of time where the city's adopted version had not been adopted yet by the county. So they were slightly different. Okay, moving right along, existing conditions. So in 2019, there were amendments made to both the zoning code and to the Comprehensive Plan regarding renewable energy systems, and that covered wind and solar. We're focusing just on the solar for this discussion. So for the Unified Zoning Code, it made solar a conditional use. There were approximately 20 supplemental things that needed to be submitted with an application. As part of the conditional use, conditions could be added to customize what the requirements were for a particular case or application. And of course, there was a formal review process by having it as a conditional use. Now, you're all well-familiar with the conditional use process, so I won't walk you through it. But just know that for members of the public, that it goes to the DABs or the CABS, depending on if it's in the city or county, goes to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately to the governing body. And there's a protest period as well. For the Comprehensive Plan regarding solar, there was a bit of guidance that was added to it. It really emphasized the need to select appropriate locations. It mentioned design and performance standards. It's not so much about how much energy was being generated, but rather about where is an ideal place or location or what areas to avoid when placing these. And really spoke a lot about protecting the viability of existing cities and their ability to grow. And that comes up later on in our, our more recent discussions. So process to date, there are two significant milestones. Really, it was before the county moratorium and after or during the county moratorium. So I've broken those up into those two phases and we'll cover those. So prior to the county moratorium, there had been an initiative started out to better align the requirements for a solar application with the size of the solar project. This had come up because we had seen a small-scale solar project come through. And there, there was a question that come up about, well, would they have had to comply with all of the different things that would be needed of a large one? So there was quite a bit of discussion about this. There was a proposal that was taken forward. It had gotten through the DABs, the CABS, ultimately made it to MAPC Advanced Plans, and was scheduled to be considered by the MAPC. That was gonna be the next step anyway. But at this time, the county was receiving a lot of questions and a lot of feedback about solar projects. And really, there were some questions that came up about the, how should they be handled and addressed in the county overall? So at this point, the County Commission approved a moratorium, which really hit the pause button, and started a new process. Now, you can see that that moratorium was later on extended and ended up going for a full 12 months and has just recently expired. This was, and it expired after the amendments were adopted by the county. But through this process, there were a number of steps. And I know you can't read this slide because it's rather small. But I would highlight that it, there were a number of MAPC Advanced Plans meetings, multiple opportunities for public comment, lots of district advisory boards, citizen advisory board meetings. So we'll highlight some of the additional ways that public comment was received. So right now, where we are in the process is that it's gone to the County Commission again. They adopted amendments, and now the question is coming to the City Council. In terms of the public input, again, a variety of processes to collect public input. One of those was a town hall event out at the Sedgwick County Extension Center out by the zoo. There were a number of station boards set up. Staff believed there were over, well over 100 people who attended this meeting. We only had 70 to 80 sign in, but based on our counts, we believe it was well over 100. Along with the boards with sticky notes and sticky dots that folks could use, we did staff presentations, and there were public comments with a microphone where folks could provide their thoughts. We also had comment cards because we know folks aren't always comfortable speaking in public. We've also received a number of emails and letters, well over 200 received since this project initiated. And so extending from October 2023 through August of this year, we've compiled those and those are available in a report. There's also an online survey with the same questions as was presented at the Open House event. About 163 participants provided information and feedback on that. There were also lots of opportunities for public comments to be received at public meetings. This slide notes that it's DAB 1 through 5, but what I would indicate is that it actually went to all the DABs except for four. And that was just because four indicated they did not want to hear it at that time. So, but lots of opportunities for folks to provide comments at public meetings. In addition to the public input, staff researched best practices. And this is an evolving field because solar panels are something that are coming across the country. There's been an emphasis, I think, especially because the cost of generating electricity through solar has decreased significantly. We also looked to what other communities were doing more locally. So we looked at six Kansas counties and 10 additional counties outside of Kansas. And we specifically reviewed them for a number of themes you can see listed here. So through the process, there were a number of themes that emerged. At the town hall and through the survey, we saw that urban development growth, decommissioning, and groundwater or even soil contamination were coming up as high priorities. As well as later on, we added to this size and configuration. So you'll see that those were addressed later on. So what we did is we took those themes, we did a review using what our existing code is, what public input we received, what are the best practices and what are other communities doing, are doing to develop potential options. So out of those options, the MAPC considered these. And their recommendation covered these items. So removing all the equipment down to a depth of four feet, strengthening the financial assurances that are currently required, requiring a plan to indicate the length of time that decommissioning would take, that the applicant would have to notify the city or county in advance of decommissioning. Also requiring testing of soil and groundwater, both pre and post-project. Also providing, requiring a list of construction materials. At the time that this was being discussed in the county, there was a concern about materials leaching from the solar panels. Or there'd been a hail event down in Texas that had broken a lot of panels and there were concerns about what happens if that occurs. And in part, that's because quite a few folks out there in the unincorporated county are on well water. And so contamination of groundwater is a significant issue for them. There were a number of things that the MAPC recommended, no changes to the zoning code. So one of them was urban growth and development. There's a process that's in place for communities out in the county, which is, in the unincorporated county, if there, there's an urban growth area that's identified, it's the same as the urban area of influence. And there's a requirement for notification of these communities if there's a case in that location and an opportunity for their Planning Commission to weigh in on whether or not it should be approved or denied. And that a recommendation of denial can change the vote requirement at the County Commission. I bring this up because that system is in place. And at this point, the MAPC did not recommend any changes. These are all based on the urban growth areas, which depict where people anticipate that the communities will grow into the future. Wichita has one, you'll notice that Wichita is not included in the urban area of influence for this zoning process. That is simply because the Planning Commission is made up of city and county appointees. So the city perspective is already represented. In terms of setbacks and configuration, MAPC did not recommend any changes. Likewise, the same on size and configuration. Now, when it came to height, though, they did recommend changes of limiting the height of the panels to 25 feet with the ability to increase during the conditional use process. When it came to fire, there was a requirement, they recommended a requirement that any company or application coming forward, that the applicant would have to have it reviewed by the, by the fire department or the county fire district. So again, so it went through the MAPC with those recommendations. Then it came forward to the County Commission. The County Commission considered the recommendations. The county commission considered the recommendations and indicated their appreciation for their efforts. However, they had some questions about whether the recommendation from the MAPC was the best fit for the county and for the community overall. There were also questions about whether the recommendation was incorporating as many best practices as possible. So with that, the county wanted to get, and specifically on these topics. So the county wanted to get another perspective on it and contracted with the Berkeley Group to provide some assistance. The Berkeley Group has worked with Johnson County and a number of communities across the US, working on zoning and solar. So the Berkeley Group provided a report with recommendations. And they reviewed the MAPC efforts and these were additional recommendations and changes to that. And they focused on all of these different topics. So with that information, staff put together an alternative set of amendments to the zoning code. And in fact, this is what the county commission ended up, ended up adopting. So there were a number of changes to that. I'll talk a little bit more specifically about those. So the amendments, the alternative amendments included definitions. They included a definition of small, medium, and large scale projects, which is important when we talk about proximity to urban growth areas. The amendments, alternative amendments also included a number of limitations. It prohibited large-scale solar projects from being placed in an urban growth area for a city. It also set a size limit of 1,500 acres for a project and restricted them to being no more than six contiguous sections of land. In addition, and these are limitations that cannot be waived, no solar project could be located closer than two miles to another one. That the maximum coverage would not exceed 65% of the land and that the applicant would be required to notify cities within two miles.
Real quick, Scott, what was there, the reasoning for having space between solar plants like that?
I think it was in order to break them up because you could have the possibility of, although there's a maximum size of 1,500 acres, if you could have two of them that were located close together, you could end up with 3,000 acres taken up as solar farms.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. It was, I will tell you, there was quite a bit of discussion at the county commission about whether or not these should be able to be waived or not. And ultimately, they voted to leave them as they could not be waived. And the reason for that was to provide two parts. It was for every, really, it was for everyone to be on the same page and understand that there were certain things that couldn't be changed and subject to change by the governing body. So to provide more certainty in the process.
What is also the justification for the 65% of the total project area? Or is there justification?
That was based on the recommendation that comes from the consultant. And part of that is also because of groundwater runoff that would be caused by the panels, so impervious surface. Part of that is also wildlife corridors, also providing space for vegetation and buffering as well.
Thank you.
So, yes. So as well, there were requirements that were added for large and medium scale projects. So they would have to submit all of these materials as part of their application. In addition, there was requirements for liability insurance, prohibition on developing on slopes 15% or more, and a requirement for a plan for collection, storage, and removal of panels. In addition, there were design requirements that were added, that they would not exceed, that the lowest edge would not exceed 10 feet. And my understanding is that that is for, to prevent erosion that's caused from rainwater coming off of the panels. Also, that they would be required to be set back at least 100 feet from the project boundary line and 250 feet from any dwelling unit because there were concerns about the impacts to nearby residential. Yes, sir?
So under any dwelling unit, that could also be, let's say I have a home and this would limit it 250 feet from my home, even if it's my property and I want to establish solar panels on my property?
You know, I think there is a nuance there that I didn't capture on this slide, that if you're participating in the project, but I'll have to confirm that.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested, thank you.
Sure. Also, with fencing, there was a change there in that fencing would be required around solar structures, but not for panels. And part of the concern was that if you fence and, you have the option of fencing an entire solar project, but that you would not be required to. And part of that is because of wildlife corridors and the ability for them to get through. Warning signage as a requirement, native vegetation, as you can see here, and screening would be required. And I'm sorry, it kind of went off the slide, but it's where there's a dwelling unit on adjacent property. So, ah, okay, additional one here. So additional financial insurances enhanced, that was a concern about what if a company goes bust. Also, a contact requirement for inactivity. So what if they just stop doing stuff? Can the, how long can the equipment sit out there? The removal depth was changed so that it would be removed regardless of depth. And again, groundwater and soil testing remains a requirement. So in terms of action, this is a schedule going from the most recent Advanced Plans meeting all the way through the county commission. This is how the themes were addressed in each of these. The alternative with Berkeley is the one alternative that were based on their report. So the next steps, again, this is coming to, the hope is to bring it to you for your consideration. You have a number of options. You can go with the alternatives that, amendments that were adopted by the county. You can go with the MAPC recommendation, which does not include the information provided by Berkeley. Or you always have the discretion and the ability to do something else, if you wanted to do something that was customized. Now, a quick note on this one is that when you see the staff report, if it, when it does, when and if it does come forward, it's the planning department's practice to indicate the MAPC recommendation in the recommended action. But I'm more than happy, I'll be more than happy to take questions and provide answers at the podium during that, during that item. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. Oh, and I do have more information after we're done with questions, just on one particular project.
So if we, go ahead. So if we have different findings in county, how does that get worked out?
I believe then I would be making another visit to the county to see about them adopting the similar ones to you, perhaps. Because i- if you chose to do something customized in the city, I don't, I don't know that they would necessarily have heartburn on it. It's just a matter of making sure that the text is the same so that we have a unified zoning code.
Under, do we have an estimate of like percentage of land that would actually be eligible for solar farms under the county's proposal? Like do we, I would imagine it'd be a relatively small.
There, there actually is quite a bit. And what I'll do is, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and branch into that other topic because you really kind of hit the nail on the head. So this is a map that was provided by one of the solar companies. The solar companies are always looking for where can they get the most bang for their buck? I mean, just like any company. And part of that comes from being able to utilize existing infrastructure. So there are three substations in the county that we're aware of that they are, have been interested to plug into because it's already existing, it's available, and it's got the capacity. So those are indicated by the yellow or oranges kind of sun symbol. Now, to your question, sir, about where solar could go in the county, at this point, small scale can go anywhere, but remember, it's the large scale that's prohibited from going into the urban growth areas, which are illustrated on this graph. Now, we know that, from what they've told us, that they would likely want to be somewhere in close proximity to the substation. So there's, there's land that is available, whether it's the prime spots they want to get to, that depends on the infrastructure, but we know that these three are out there.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, so I'm not going to ask them all today. I mean, I would first say that I'm not supportive of the county commission's recommendations. I think the intention, at least implied with the commissioners, alternative findings basically prohibit any utility scale solar. And I think that's a dangerous precedent to set. So not supportive of it. I do have some questions about the MAPC recommendations. I mean, when I'm looking at the requirements added from the county commission, that are at least 250 feet from any dwelling unit, I think that's an overreach. Now, I know that you said you would specify whether that's somebody's personal dwelling or another dwelling. In addition, I circled a lot of like concerns I have, the two miles to any other solar project. I don't understand the need for that, the 65%. I have questions. The applicant is supposed to be no further than two miles to another solar project. A lot of these just, I don't think are useful. Large-scale projects are prohibited, not just that they could have any exceptions. I think that's an overreach as well. Not on more six contiguous pieces of land. In addition, the, one of the questions I have, and I know probably my colleagues will have questions too, what were the six counties reviewed when we were looking at regulations? Were they ones that had moratoriums? Were they ones that had active solar utility scale projects?
Yeah, no, there were, there were a couple. I know we looked at Douglas County and we looked at Johnson County because there's a, there's been at least one large solar project that went across both of their boundaries. And I believe there may have even been another one in Douglas County. I'm going to, we'll have to, well, okay. Looks like we've got the answer here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Justin Constantino with the Planning Department. We looked at Johnson, Douglas, Butler, Reno, Sumner, and Kingman Counties.
Okay, thank you. Sure. I know some of those are very pro and some are very against, so it seems like a pretty comprehensive list as well. Did we also examine this in light of, you know, a lot of it could just be looking at restrictions, but how cities encourage solar development to come as well? Was that any of our research about, are there cities positioning themselves to encourage this type of development in their community?
No, I don't know that that came up from either our look at the best practice nationally or the communities in Kansas.
Okay. I'd be interested in seeing what we can do to encourage development, not prohibit it in areas. I'm worried about essentially killing potential hundreds of millions of dollars in projects, increased tax revenue. And I appreciate all the work. I know this is a lot of work and it takes a lot of time to all do all this. But I will not be supportive of the county commission's recommendations and I know have a lot more concerns as well, but we can talk about that when this comes before us too.
If, if I could, then I do want to mention just one, one item here, which is, so you can see that the Murray Gill Substation is located within the urban growth area for Wichita. Part of the question that's come up is that prospective solar company has indicated an interest in locating somewhere in that vicinity. For them, because this project is in the unincorporated county, but is in the urban growth area for Wichita, the rules that the county commission adopted apply. So I think part of the question that will, may come to you is at some point, would you be interested in modifying the urban growth area to accommodate a project in that area? And I don't, not looking for an answer today, I just want to expose that to you so that you're aware of it. It may or may not come up, so.
I have one quick question. It's actually on your next slide after questions. It's regarding the county tax analysis.
Yes.
So looking, if we were to not do a commercial with 10-year abatement though, I think the state still?
So I am not the best equipped to explain this, but I can do it at a high level because it was the appraiser that actually, or finance department from the county that provided this information. But there is a tax abatement, a property tax abatement for solar projects. And so part of the discussion was what's the highest and best use of the land in terms of property taxes? And so the analysis, what it showed was that either residential or commercial both produce a greater amount of property taxes than solar does at the, at a similar site.
Okay, so we're looking at investment of $10 million would, if we did a commercial even with a 10-year abatement, we looking at cumulative $299,000 in increased tax revenue? Just at a $10 million investment?
Yes, it's, I believe it's $10 million across all of them. So the same amount of investment and then what would that yield in terms of property taxes from those uses?
And $10 million is probably pretty small for a utility scale development. That's a pretty small development.
Yeah, I think what this is showing, right, is to Scott's point, right, of highest and best use. I'll tell you from an economic development perspective, there are a lot of concerns, right? We are getting more and more large mega-site related economic development interest, especially in close proximity to, to substations, right? And so when you start thinking about amassing 500, 1,000, 1,500 acres for a large-scale commercial project, right? Our recommendation would be to reserve those for large-scale commercial projects. Even with a 10-year abatement, you would generate more property taxes than you would with a solar farm.
Well, I can respect that opinion, but I, if it's somebody's private land and they're a landowner, I think they should have the ability to use their land how they want. And I understand that there may be city, things that we want there too, but if a landowner wants to use their property in this way versus this way, I don't think we should be in the business of telling them how to use their property or not, so.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Mayor, that's all we have.
There was a glaring presentation.